Call to all of the town in Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, January 14th, 2021. Welcome everyone. This time we'll just start right off with invocation. Chaplain Jerry Ferguson, come on down.
Let's pray. Almighty God, your word invites us to approach your throne of grace with confidence so that we may receive mercy and find grace to help us in our time of need. Your word instructs us to number our days that we may gain a heart of wisdom. Your word also says if any of you lacks wisdom, you can ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you. Heavenly Father, as we convene this town council meeting in the first month of the new year, we ask your wisdom and mercy and grace in the issues that will be discussed and acted upon tonight. We thank you for those who are willing to serve as decision makers for the community, especially the new ones who have joined the council. We thank you also for those who are behind the scenes and do the detail work in preparation for the decisions to be made. As our town manager Larry Tarkowski prepares for retirement, we're thankful for his faithful and wise service to our community. We ask your blessing and protection as he moves into a new adventure of life. We thank you for those who are being recognized tonight for their faithful service to the town and community. For the volunteers whose many hours of contributions enable the work of the town to be carried out with more efficiency, we ask your blessing and strength. We especially thank you for your presence among the individuals and families who have been impacted by COVID-19. I know you have received many prayers concerning this pandemic, and am confident that you care and are involved in each life that has experienced its impact. Thank you for the progress that is being made to provide medical relief and prevention. As we move through 2021, may we grow in our sensitivity and debility to respond rightly and serve one another in the times of need. As we move into new levels of state and national government, we pray that your presence be felt as 2021 unfolds. I close this prayer as the Psalmist David closed one of his prayers. May the favor of the Lord our God rest on us. Establish the work of our hands for us. Yes, establish the work of our hands. This is our humble prayer to you, Almighty God. Amen.
Sir, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinsinger?
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Mayor Pogura?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving right along, we're on item five, Vice Mayor Appointment. As many of you know that with Vice Mayor Nye, who did not choose to rerun for election, it opened up a vacancy for Vice Mayor Onadias. So with that being said, we've thought about who would be the new council members, and I'm sure anyone would be able to fill that role correctly and appropriately. But at this time, I would like to open it up to anyone that has any suggestions. My suggestion and my motion will be for Councilwoman Hunt to fill that role as Vice Mayor.
I'll second that.
Well, we're just going to get right to it then, aren't we? If anyone else has anything else, we can vote on it first and then move right along to the vote, but...
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
So without Councilwoman Hunt voting, clerk, call the vote.
And that passes Mayor?
Seeing that was unanimous, I think it was a good choice, and I have complete confidence in Vice Mayor Hunt and how she will serve our community. So let's give her a round of applause. We're going to keep this short and sweet, and we're just going to keep moving along. Item six, scheduled announcements, Chamber of Commerce presentation. Brady, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, council and new Vice Mayor. Congratulations, by the way. As Mayor said, my name is Brady. I am here on behalf of the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce. We have been invited here to give a brief presentation. The presentation we would like to make this month is a celebration and welcoming of new entrepreneurial spirit here in Prescott Valley. We know times are tough everywhere in the world right now. Our community isn't immune to that, but we have some living proof with us today that Prescott Valley is still growing, not only as a town, but our business community is growing as well. I have a brand-new business here to present and introduce and give her the floor to say a couple of words. I have Jess Costa of Freedom Core Pilates.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I'm not as tall as Brady. Thank you for having me. Thank you to the chamber for bringing me here. Pilates, I get the question all the time, what is Pilates and why should people do it? So Pilates is a workout that helps move the spine. It helps create some mobility and flexibility in your entire body. We do so on machines, not on mats, as some people know it to be on a mat, but we work on machines that help. If you've had any past injuries or anything going on in your body, like any knee or hip or spine, we help with that. We help with pain. We help with the muscles. We help realign the body, pretty much. We will be a small group studio, so there will be about six people per class, and you will have one instructor to those six people. And the instructor will definitely be able to manage everybody and feel like everybody's getting a one-on-one experience. And we offer discounts to active-duty EMS, fire, police, and we do also offer the same discounts for veterans, which would be 15% off. And then we offer free introductory classes for anybody else that wants to try. You can come just try the reformer, get on it, see if you like it or not. So that is us. They would get in touch with us. We have a website, freedomcorpiilates.com. We're on Facebook. We're on Instagram. I would say the easiest way is email, studio@freedomcorpiilates.com.
Awesome. Well, welcome, and thanks for choosing Prescott Valley.
Thank you very much, and I have to say, just, everybody has been incredibly nice since being here and going on this journey. So I'm very happy to be a part of this community and be in Prescott Valley. So, thank you very much.
Give a round of applause, everyone. Anything else, Brady?
Marnie has a presentation tonight as well.
Ooh.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, congratulations, and new council members. It's a pleasure to be for you today and start off the new year by going back with a little bit of a recap from last year, and that would be the Valley of Lights, one of our premier holiday destinations activities in northern Arizona and one we're very, very proud of. And I'm going to do this. Okay, Valley of Lights 2020. We were open from December 26th through, November 26th through December 30th, always opening Thanksgiving evening. This year, we changed the hours and worked from Sunday through Thursday, 6 to 9, and then Friday, Saturday, and the holidays, including Christmas Eve, 6 to 10. So we did cut back an hour, but we did that after, basically, surveying the past three years, every car that came in after nine o'clock during the week, we found maybe five, 10. We balanced it against the cost of electricity and figured three hours was good. It was also better for our volunteers during the weeknights that could bring kids there. So it worked out very well. We did, we'll make one change on Christmas Eve. On December 23rd, I went to do, there's always one of us from the chamber that goes and closes it up, and I was there on the 23rd at quarter to nine, like, you know, it should be ending, and I'll have a picture of it. I was at Fifth and Second Street, right above Fane Park, stopped. The line went all the way down into the park. It took me 30 minutes to get to the other side. We ended up staying open a little bit longer to accommodate all the cars. I said, we will not close a gate until every car is through. So we found out December 23rd is a very big night. We had great weather, never lost a night. Little fog one night, but that was as compared to last year where we had snow and we lost a couple nights last year. 133 volunteers worked at donation booth and helped with the stroll, so those people that come out and give their time. The stroll through Valley of Lights was held on December 19th with approximately 1,900 attendees, a little bit less than we've had in the past, but we recognize that public participation, even though it was outdoors with COVID, people are a little more concerned on larger gatherings, so we think that's why the numbers were down. But, but, our total car count for the 35 nights was 32,798 cars, which averages 937 cars a night. We always kind of try and play with those numbers. The largest night for cars was December 19th with 1,540 cars. There were 16 nights of over 1,000 cars going through Valley of Lights. Our lowest night for cars, because everybody wants to know, was the 28th of December, kind of towards the end when we're getting ready to close. We had 370, but that was incredible. Last year, I have the numbers here, that we had, on 2019, we had 15,581 cars through, so almost, you know, almost over double. And then we always kind of figure the average four people for a car, so we think, okay, what's the total attendance when you have? So we think four people a car, a lot of trucks, a lot of vans, but averaging four, we would have made attendance of, and including the Valley of Stroll, 131,192 people would have been through Valley of Lights. So, exceptional numbers. We think that goes along with families being closer, people staying closer to home, and while there may be a lot of duplicates in that, because a lot of our volunteers said, you know, oh, we went, we came through last night, or we've seen it, we've been through three times, that's still the impressions, and those people are maybe bringing different people back. So huge, huge numbers. We had, we did not do a new display this year, but we refurbished some very old displays. If you have to recall it, Valley of Lights is now 21 years old, and some of those displays were built in way back then, 21 years ago. So lightings changed, the weather's taken its toll on them, so we did the candy cane tunnel, and if you were out there and saw them, they looked absolutely amazing. The Valley of Lights Open sign that sits on Highway 69, brand-new lights, it looked absolutely beautiful, and then the toy soldier was also refurbished with brand-new lights. The Holly Tunnel was repaired and reconstructed. That's the one we lost last year on Thanksgiving night due to the storm. We couldn't bring it back last year, but we were able to find enough pieces and put it together to actually bring that Holly Tunnel back, which I was really excited, because they didn't tell me they were going to be able to get it done in time, and they did. We had also, we installed the security cameras. We had signage of video surveillance that, we did that last year as, because we did have some issues out there, and we will do that every year. So we work with a local business that actually puts video cameras, and we can watch along the roadway. And we continued with music from the stroll. Okay, that's what I just said. Now, there's some photos. That's our stroll, and it was a beautiful night, and if you look on the lower left-hand side, that's the full moon kind of dropping down behind the dancing hippopotamus. It was a beautiful evening. The full moon just kind of added to the whole atmosphere, and those of you who know Jean Lupa on the far, far left side, I'm sorry, she's in the hippo singing with the kids. And then just people that come through and just love it with the music. It just gives it such a great Christmas and holiday atmosphere, kind of feels like you're walking Main Street Disneyland. This was the night, one of the nights I went down to go pick up, close up and help pick up everything. That's going down from the top of the hill into Fane Park. That's a view of the line. If you look, it's all the way down into the park, and that's coming out to the first tunnel that says Valley of Lights, and then the drive, and all the cars in front. So that was an average sight for everybody. Then coming up for 2021, we're working on a new display, and then I'm looking at, as I spent a lot of time sitting there, driving through very, very slowly, I was able to evaluate all the, all the displays and say, okay, what needs work and can be refurbished and brought up to new lighting and really make it look good. And this year, I've passed the nativity, and I think that was one of the first ones built, and we will redo that for next year. We'll buy three new 12-foot banners to announce the Valley of Lights is open, and we apologize for doing, putting them, touching them to the signs out in front, and we got yelled at for that, but we moved it back. But we found out, we thought the eight-foot was big enough. It's not. We got to do 12-foot, just to remind people of the new hours. And then we'll change the hours on December 23rd to do 6 to 10 because of high traffic, and we'll close it on Thursday, December 30th, and we'll be open 36 days next year. So already planning, we close it and we start thinking about the next year. And then just real quick, since I probably will not be back before April, coming up in 2021, exciting times, and we're looking forward to it. And we've got our, right now, anything is subject to change based on environmental conditions, and we know that. We knew that from last year, and we still see that happening somewhat this year. We'll do our virtual quarterly breakfast. We'll be doing that next month. We're working on putting our business academy, we did do it last year, somewhat virtual, somewhat more of a hybrid, and that's a lot of what I do is hybrid. Coffee chat, morning networks hosted by board members, and again, connecting with our businesses. Business video promotion, and we received a grant. We'll be working on an entry-level workforce program connecting students, high school, college, with our employers here to get them working. And traditional methods of meeting and greeting are not happening anymore, so we're going to be doing a lot of video, Zoom, and we received some funding to assist us with that. And then coming up, obviously, we have plans for our events. They're on the calendar, and those are the dates that we have things scheduled. And I would also say that right now, it's a tight time for business. Congress passed that second round of stimulus. PPP has been reauthorized, also the idle loan, and we are focused on making sure our businesses know about those opportunities that they can take advantage of, that money is there. They need to, they need it. We need to keep them solvent and working in Prescott Valley. So a whole bunch of what I'm doing right now is connecting that information with our businesses and making sure that I'm up to speed to be able to answer the questions, because that money is there, and we want them to get it here so they can stay in business here. So it's really a lot of, lot of information coming, a lot of resources. The portals are just now opening up, and we're sharing it, and we're finding that a lot of people are busy trying to just keep business open. That's what I do. I follow all of these, all of these information, all these resources, and make sure that I'm sharing it with them. And we found that a lot of them don't even know that it's existing, and so now we're making that track back and saying, here's information, and we're visiting all the businesses to get that, Brady, myself, and Gloria. So I would answer any questions if you have anything.
Counsel?
Yeah, a quick one. Can you tell us the difference between the May 7th and the October 2nd event?
May 7th is part of our Prescott Valley Days, and it's our, we just added Friday nights, our Fiesta del Pueblo. What actually we wanted to have this year, we did not have it, is it's Puente de la Comunidad that started with the Prescott Valley Police Department. We went to partner and do a joint event to make it a bigger celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. We were unable to do it this year, and so it's on the schedule for next year. So it's two different events. One, I would say, our Fiesta del Pueblo on our Friday night is our party. It's our fiesta, big, you know, and I would say the one we do in October will be more celebration of heritage, more family-oriented activities and things like that.
Anything else, Counsel?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I volunteered one of those evenings, and it was so much fun. I just so enjoyed meeting new people. I would say 90% of the cars that came through donated as well, and many came back around, and I think it was on December 2nd. So for those of you who have not volunteered, it's a great opportunity to be out there and serve your community. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Hope you enjoy it. We had heaters out there. We have snacks in the trailer for the, get out of the weather and make it nice for our volunteers, but thank you, ma'am.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving right on to item 6B, Police Department Introductory Staff Recognition.
Good evening, Mayor Council staff. Thank you again for this opportunity to introduce to you some of our newer employees. If I could have Sabrina Rosendahl, Tim Taylor, and Laura Mett, come on down, please. If you brought any family or friends or anybody along with you to share in the recognition, it's not a singular experience being an employee of the Police Department, because we are a family. We do recognize that, although we recognize today individuals, people like Garrett over there happens to be Sabrina's other half, I won't say better half, but I know that you support each other. And so tonight I'll recognize you, but I'll also say, please take our thanks home to your families as well. Thanks, Garrett. I'm going to start with Sabrina, but I'd like to say something first. You know, these three individuals here, as well as Sergeant Robbins, Roberts, excuse me, who we will recognize in just a moment, really are good examples of the kind of people and the kind of work ethics, the kind of quality service that has made Prescott Valley for 2020 the ninth safest community in the state of Arizona, according to safewise.org. Mayor, I think you have a eighth safest... Mayor, I think you have a eighth safest community?
I think you might be right. I might, I hope I'm right.
Yeah, so, you know, different insurance companies tend to look at the communities across the state, but, you know, it's not just about numbers. It's also about the commendations that we get about these, these individuals and others at the Police Department because of the quality of the work that they do in our community. So I'll continue. Sabrina, Sabrina Rosendahl was born in Flagstaff, Arizona, and later landed in Chino Valley, where she spent her childhood with her parents and two sisters. Growing up, Sabrina enjoyed sports, academics, and extracurriculars. She earned her associate's degree at Yavapai College just prior to graduating from high school. Sabrina went on from there to earn her bachelor's degree from NAU. Sabrina married her high school sweetheart at 18 years old. I don't question your judgment at all. Garrett and I go back a little ways, so I can say that. And Jay just recently celebrated six years of marriage. Congratulations. They currently reside in Chino Valley with their two dogs, Mac and Bruce. Sabrina's husband also works for the Prescott Valley Police Department. I think I gave that one away earlier, and has for two and a half years now. Sabrina graduated the academy in May and has really enjoyed her time in the field, learning just what being a police officer means and the endless opportunities it brings to making an impact in someone's life. Sabrina greatly looks forward to what lies ahead. You know, that, that line, and I think this comes from you, making an impact, it's very important. I think you made a really good traffic stop the other night and arrested somebody in possession of some fentanyl. I can tell you that you might have saved a life, so Sabrina. Tim Taylor. Tim was born and raised in Indiana. He earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Indiana University. At 17 years of age, he joined the Army as an enlisted soldier and retired after 26 years as a major, having served in Iraq, Afghanistan, Israel, Bulgaria, Bosnia, and many other places around the world. Tim moved to Prescott in 2016 with his wife, Aunts, and went to work for a local business in Prescott Valley. In March of 2020, Tim joined us at the Prescott Valley Police Department as a community services officer. Since that time, he's worked in evidence, helping them catch up the misdemeanor paperwork, launched the virtual block watch campaign, coordinated numerous food and book giveaways for the community, conducted more than seven background investigations, and he's a trainer for various complex background investigation programs. Tim is fully committed to our department and town, not unlike his previous service to our country. Tim and his wife are avid outdoors people who enjoy hiking and camping in the mountains and forests around northern Arizona. His wife is a known, is known in the artist community for her oil paintings depicting various people and critters of the Southwest. Last but not least, Laura Mant. Laura's been with the Prescott Valley Police Department since June of 2019, serving as a victim services liaison. She joined us shortly after earning her master's in criminal justice from the Arizona State University. While earning her degree, Laura gained experience serving at the Maricopa County Superior Court Law Library and Maricopa County Adult Probation. She is a member of Prescott Valley Police Department's Special Victims Unit, Sexual Assault Response Team, and she specializes in protective orders and assisting victims of sex crimes. In December of 2019, she was selected to participate in the highly competitive Excellence in Law Enforcement Victim Assistance Training and Enrichment Program through the FBI's Victim Services Division. In January of 2020, she was selected by the Attorney General's Office to serve on the Victims Rights Advisory Committee, and is a member of the committee's Pre-Conviction Victims Rights Request Waiver Forms Work Group. In 2020, Arizona instituted a new statewide protective order system called AZ Point, and several legislative changes to protective orders went into effect. These state-level changes resulted in the need for significant adjustments at the local level. Laura took the lead on the AZ Point system and was instrumental in the development, implementation, and in current administration of AZ Point. Laura establishing training and protocols to ensure that all patrol officers and civilian staff involved in the processing service were trained on how to use the new system and educated on how the legislative changes would impact their role. When AZ Point went into effect, Laura stayed in constant contact with the ACJC and the Administrative Office of the Court to resolve issues that the department encountered. So you can see that, that these three individuals demonstrate our commitment to the community, our commitment to criminal justice and safety. So thank you for your service.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, folks, for coming. We appreciate you. Moving on to 7A, Staff Service Awards. Nancy Roberts, Police Sergeant, 15 years. Sergeant Roberts, come on down.
I guess I learned the other day that Nancy has had the unfortunate opportunity that every time she receives a service award, the chief is out of town, so I get to do it. So I apologize again. Let me start with the bio. Nancy graduated the Northern Arizona Training Academy in May of 2016. After 15 years with Prescott Valley PD, Nancy has accomplished great things as she has risen through the ranks to sergeant. In the more recent years, Nancy's worked as a patrol sergeant, and most recently, as our agencies, let me take a deep breath, training sergeant since last supply. Her current job assignments are training coordinator, emergency operations coordinator, employee assistance coordinator, mental health liaison, reserve coordinator, policy coordinator. I didn't get through, sorry. Honor guard sergeant, commendations, awards oversight, and then negotiation sergeant. Nancy's really caught a lot of responsibilities, and we appreciate her hard work in there. In 2020, law enforcement agencies across the nation received a presidential executive order which stipulated needed changes in policies and procedures related to defensive tactics, uses of force, and officer accountability. Nancy had an integral part in seeing that these changes occurred and were submitted to the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police, which resulted in a national certification of standards allowing our agency to be eligible for Department of Justice grant awards for the next three-year period. The certification is just a small example of the kind of work that Nancy does, and it's, it's very important work, you know? Sometimes we have to do things that have to do with policies and procedures. It's not exciting work, it's not fun. It's really not. But it's important work, and, and she jumps into it, she gets it done, and she does a quality job on it. Nancy's done an exceptional job as well in bringing large-scale trainings to our agency, which allows us to send more officers to beneficial trainings each year. This not only saves our department money, it creates an agency of more well-rounded and educated officers to serve our community. Nancy works hard in carrying out the bigger picture of growth and goals for our agency and our community. This is evident in her continuous efforts to better our agency through training, dedication, hard work, and being a leader that others should emulate and follow. Nancy wants to give big credit for her success in life to her parents, who've always told her she could do anything she set her mind to, encouraged her to always do her best and never give up on her ambitions. Nancy wants to give thanks and appreciation to her partner Danny, who's been by her side for the last 12 years, which has been no easy task by any means because of the job, right? Just the job. Okay. Nancy says her nine-year-old twins are her biggest and best challenge in life. Connor and Mackenzie bring focus to the importance of coming home safe every night and always understand when mommy gets called away for work. Nancy looks forward to the up, looks forward, excuse me, to the upcoming challenges in her career and hopes to promote further up the ranks in the years to come. Nancy Roberts.
We'll start off with Councilwoman. Go ahead.
Obviously, you're an invaluable asset to our community, and I so respect what you have been doing, and it is a lot of work, and I know so very much appreciated by our town and by the police force, and I just wish you success in the coming years as well.
We just really appreciate all of your effort, all of your hard work, and just everything that you do to make the community better in every way that you see that it needs it. We just really appreciate that, so thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Sergeant, thank you for everything you do, and now I know why I see you just about everywhere, because of the list that the commander just read. And thank you for bringing your beautiful family with you tonight, and they're the most important, and I know you realize that. So thank you for everything you do for us.
It's kind of wow, what's next? Yeah, I mean, you've really done it all in just 15 short years. I'm so happy you're with our department, and I really appreciate you and actually everybody out here, so as far as the Police Department goes. So keep up the good work, I'm sure you will. Sounds like you're well-practiced at it. Thanks again.
And sometimes we forget that police officers are people too, so thank you for being such a great sport about everything that I've known you through, and I'm so glad you have more goals for climbing the ranks and going higher, because it's always a good thing to strive to be better. And thank you for 15 years. That's a great career right there. So thank you so much, Nancy.
Thank you again for doing your service for 15 years. I'm sure at times there's been challenges with family and, and with work and keeping everything balanced together, but you've done a good job, and again, thank you again for your 15 years, and we hope to see you for many, many more years.
Little Snapple fact, for those of you that didn't know, but Nancy, I FTO'd Nancy on my phase, on her Phase 1 and Phase 4. It was many moons ago, but I still remember one night on Phase 4, which, for those of you that don't understand, Phase 1 is basically the first time that a new officer gets in the patrol car and goes about business, and then Phase 4 is when they get to demonstrate how well they are and how capable they are of being a police officer. And we had a rough night, one night, and I remember going home, and my wife asked me how it went. She was always curious. I said, man, it was, it was a rough night. I think I yelled a little bit too much. I think I might have been a little too hard, I don't know. And she asked me, hey, what do you think? How, how is she going to be? I said, oh, she's going to be an amazing officer. No doubt in my mind, she will be an amazing officer. And at that time, I mean, I didn't communicate it, but there was no doubt you would be here on your 15 years. Now, at the time, I never thought I would be here at the 15 years. But nonetheless, I never doubted that you would be here in 15 years, and I expect you to be back in another five years and for me to be standing here at that time, too. So Nancy, you are an amazing officer. You lead by example, and your family should be proud. You mentioned a little bit here, but it needs to be on your resume that you are a twin mom, because that is, that says a lot. And that's, coming from a dad of twins, there's nothing that this woman can't, can't overcome. So round of applause to you, Nancy.
Laura Lee says I have to have a speech, and you don't tell Laura Lee no. I've learned that over the years. But I want to say thank you to the council. I know there's some new faces over my last 15 years, some of them have changed, but I would say that it's never faltered the support that I felt from the council and from our community, even in these rough times. So I definitely appreciate it. I'm sad to see Larry go, but I'm glad he's here for my 15 years, and maybe I can talk him into coming back in five more years as a guest appearance, so. But thank you very much for the continued support.
Council communications or comments? Start on the end with Councilman Kinzinger.
No comments tonight.
Councilwoman?
Do we get to have a roast for Larry?
Larry's still employed here, so there's, there's going to be no roasting this evening.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman? Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to give a shout out to the Police Department. On 9G, they are getting another grant for $135,000, $45,000 match required by us for Stop Violence Against Women in Under 9H Consent is a DUI impaired driving grant, which we all know is very important. And the chief told me today that they actually were chasing a motorcycle at 187 miles per hour on Fane in 89A.
Plug your ears, Ivan.
And so this stuff is so important, and that's a $50,000 grant, and this, this stuff is so important to keep us number eight and a half or nine safest city, whatever it is. And then you've heard before that a couple of us are working on a fentanyl working group, so if you're interested in helping us with that, with a special emphasis on adolescents up to the about 22, 25-year-olds, please call me. And then we heard the other day at our budget workshop that the sales tax is up in the community, and so thank you, thank you, thank you for shopping and eating local.
Councilwoman? Councilwoman?
Just like to welcome Kendall back. We're so glad to see your smiling face, and we still hold Jerry in our prayers.
Thank you so much.
Well, one comment I just want to say is, we're going to start putting, Council and myself will have our business cards. Usually, there's a table in the back room, but we're going to start leaving them out, so feel free to take them, do whatever you wish with them, but it's a way to reach out to us and shoot us an email or a call or anything. We welcome comments from the public, so start looking for that on the, on the back. We can have them back on that back rack, that would be perfect, so. So just pay attention to that, so. All right, moving on. Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separate for discussion and possible action. Council, you've all had a chance to review. If you'd like to pull an item, do so now. If not, we will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as written.
I'll second.
Clerk, call the vote.
May I pass this unanimously, Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Item 10A, Arts and Culture Commission. Barbara Bayless, I believe. Vice Mayor, you'll be taking this?
Yes. Is Barbara with us tonight?
There she is.
Welcome.
Come on down, Barbara.
Come on down. So tonight, we are excited to fill a vacancy, which was advertised, two applicants applied. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye and Councilmember Rick, Councilmembers Rick Anderson and Marty Grossman conducted the interviews, and are recommending the appointment of Barbara Bayless for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021. And your director is here, well, she was here, I guess she's not here. Casey was here. So, oh, Casey's in the back, if you haven't met Casey yet. So anyway, Barbara, thank you so much. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Over to the microphone right there.
There you go.
Thank you.
This is all new to me, so I'm looking forward to experiencing it and working with the committee, the committee members, and I hope to grow art and culture in the area.
Great.
Excellent. Welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Barbara Bayless to the Arts and Culture Commission for a non-voting position with term renewal date of June 30th, 2021.
I'd like to second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
May I pass this unanimously, Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you'll have a blast.
I'm hoping.
All right, well, moving on. Item 10B, zoning map change, ZMC 19-007, Creekside Villas. Mr. Parker, first reading.
While figuring out the logistics of the visuals, I'll open up. You're considering a zoning map change and associated ordinance for a project that's been in the works since the late 1980s. The villages Lynx Creek was approved initially when I worked for the county many, many moons ago, and was very successful. That project was proposed in three phases. At that time, two phases were concluded and completed, and they've been a nice addition now to the town of Prescott Valley, having been annexed in 2009. The subject properties is, they're located immediately north of the existing villages of Lynx Creek and was proposed as Phase 3. of Lynx Creek and was proposed as Phase 3 of that project when first developed in Yabupai County. A lot has changed since the development of the villages of Lynx Creek, namely infrastructure in the area. Specifically and probably most importantly, the Fane Road alignment took place and was constructed, which eliminated a potential secondary access, which was proposed then off of a dirt road known as Old Fane Road. That presented several obstacles for this project to continue forward, but they've worked diligently over time to be able to do so. This shows the area affected by the proposed zoning map change. Those areas to the south utilized in a planned area development use district as the villages at Lynx Creek, Unit 2. Proposed Unit 3 is currently zoned R1L-70. That's a residential zoning classification that the town overlaid to the property when the town annexed it pursuant to state law. We have to abide by the most analogous use district when we annex those properties into the town. In the middle of that is a piece of property that's omitted from the project. Bill Fane was asked by the villages of Lynx Creek to dedicate potentially an area within this Phase 3 for an RV storage facility that has been utilized now by the villages of Lynx Creek homeowners association, but that area is omitted from this application. It shows the exception. It shows the layout of the property, its relationship to Highway 69 as well as, of course, Fane Road. Fane Road at the northern extent of this property is elevated by about six feet above the natural terrain because of the approach to the drainage structure, which occurs immediately adjacent to the intersection. This shows the proposed layout of the mobile home park. It will be a new product placed. There will not be used mobile homes placed here. You can see that prior to reconsideration in 2018, they worked to identify things like a clubhouse, a pool area, a area for dogs and people to utilize within the development. Two main issues that were discussed during the Planning and Zoning Commission were, one, the access to the property. This portion of Village Way is a public dedicated roadway. Previously, when it was subdivided in Yabupai County, Village Way was a private roadway. It presents a couple of challenges. One, it was 20 feet in width when it was constructed because that was standard in Yabupai County for private roadways. The proposal now is to expand that roadway to a 24-foot width, which will meet now the town's standards. As part of review of this application, a registered professional traffic engineer was engaged to evaluate the traffic that would go in and out of this proposed Phase 3 project. Her report shows that there is additional capacities available on the villages of Lynx Creek as a public road. That was published and made available to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The other issue was the buffer area potentially between the villages of Lynx Creek and the proposed Creekside Villas. There was discussion about potential encroachments that have occurred on Fane's property. And there have been, I know, continued discussions between property owners on how to resolve that issue. With that, I'd conclude. I will tell you that the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this thing first in 2018. Said you gotta do a better job, send them back to the drawing board. Then after that, they, through a series of new details, were able to identify the actual developer that is coming forward to develop this piece of property. And those refinements caused the Planning and Zoning Commission, after two public hearings, to recommend to unanimously the approval of this project. They also, at the same time, approved a preliminary development plan. And I would respond, Mayor, to you or any of the council at your direction. I know that Brad Fane is here and he would like to make remarks.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker?
I do. I have one. So this is the northwest corner at Fane Road and 69, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, will there be additional egress that not only the new proposed area will have, but also where the existing was, is now for where the improvement will be made? Because it looked like they all have to go west then if they were gonna go east. So there'll be additional egress, correct?
Two, two things occurred. When Yabupai County elected to construct Fane Road, which eliminated what was gonna be the secondary access to this phase of development because of the elevation, Yabupai County on their nickel extended Village Way to the south, all the way down to its, its intersection with Bradshaw Mountain Drive, to be able to have a signalized or controlled intersection to make left-hand turns. That was done by Yabupai County because of the impact to this portion of property which was proposed Phase 3. In working through this project, ADOT has suggested that they would issue a temporary or a emergency vehicle access off of the highway, should there be a need for emergency ingress and egress for emergency vehicles because of, of some circumstance. That has not been completely worked out. However, if you review the ordinance, that's one of several conditions that are recommended to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission as passage of the ordinance. The other is, we have had a long tradition of requiring commercial properties to collect a 2% surcharge on mobile home developments, RV developments and apartments. And the recommendation is contained in your brief as well, to collect that 2% surcharge on rents in this RV development, excuse me, mobile home development.
Right, thank you.
Anything else?
Invite Mr. Fane up perhaps?
Do we need to hear from one of the developers? If not, entertain a motion. Unless he...
This, this is a public hearing, so you'd have to open it to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. It wasn't on my agenda as a public hearing. Ivan?
You're right, it's not on the agenda. But let's go ahead and hold a public hearing.
Okay. Open it up as a public hearing. Mr. Fane, you're welcome down then.
Brad Fane with the Fane Signature Group. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. As Richard indicated, it's been a long haul to get here. We've been at this for about four years when we first presented the town. And, you know, we're, we're right, right about where we started, except we do have a developer, you know, that was able to produce a final development plan that really gives everybody a great picture of what is being proposed here. The biggest difference I would offer to the council is the existing villages that had three phases originally planned and only the first two got built were a fee simple product. So the owners of those homes also own the dirt, the fee simple title. This project will look very similar to the existing one with the exception of they won't own the dirt. They'll lease the dirt, but they'll own their home and the place. So as the public drives by it, it will look very similar to the other one. But the big difference is in the fee simple. Richard alluded to the history of the secondary access and, and that was a tricky one because of everybody in this room, Richard was probably the only one here when it was all put together in the county. And so there was an education that needed to take place among staff and among the people involved in the project. But as he alluded, when Fane Road was developed, we had access to Fane Road as our secondary access. And we went back to the county when they approved that road with ADOT and we said, "Do we get to tie into Fane Road? We have this agreement with the county." And they said, "No, you cannot tie into this road." So then the county took it upon themselves to solve the situation that we found ourselves in. And they were the ones who directed the secondary access to be to the south off of Bradshaw. And that's what, as Richard alluded to, they constructed the road to the county standards at that time. And that is the secondary access to the project, which also gives both projects, the existing villages and the new one, a stoplighted exit if they want to make a left turn onto Highway 69. So it's a lot safer down there anyways. We also worked with ADOT and we got as far as we can with ADOT. ADOT isn't a body that likes to commit to too many things in advance, but they gave us every indication that if this gets zoning approval, one of the first steps the developer can make is to apply for a permit to have an emergency access onto the highway. That will not only benefit the project that's being proposed, but it will also benefit the existing project because they too will have a secondary emergency, or actually a third exit if there's an emergency in their complex, because the roads will connect if they so desire. And so that's really a benefit to all parties to have that emergency access onto Highway 69. The other thing that I would like to just kind of reiterate is on the traffic study. There were a lot of concerns about the timing of the traffic study when we did it because there's a lot of seasonal activity in that community. We actually did one traffic study with two updates. And over those three traffic studies, we hit three different quarters of the year. So we hit three out of four quarters, different seasons down there. And in every case, the traffic came back that the road is, is approaching, I think at its highest point, about two-thirds of its capacity. So there's plenty of room in the, in the way the county designed it originally. And the developer today has agreed to widen the road to 24 feet when they're in there doing their improvements. And the community also requested calming humps. So he's gonna put in speed bumps, but more of the bumps, just, just to make sure that traffic along Village Way stays slow and, and calm. But the neighbors that are gonna be moving in are gonna be of the same demographic, so they're all gonna wanna be looking out for each other. And I, I don't think that'll be a, a big issue. Another issue that was brought to us as a developer is flooding. The current vacant site does flood. The history to this is, when they designed the original project and the civilian engineer designed the flooding, Highway 69 was a two-lane highway. And they designed it to that configuration. When ADOT widened Highway 69 to a five lane, two lanes in each direction plus a turn lane, there was a lot of flooding on the other side of the highway that ADOT opened up the, the pipes to go into the highway, which allowed to relieve that side, which caused more water to be on our side of the highway. The design that the engineer had at that time didn't satisfy that and there has been flooding. The good news is by approval of this development, the new developer through their civil will have to address that flooding, otherwise their units will be flooded and that won't sell. So this project will resolve the flooding that's out there. And so that's a really good thing for the existing neighbors. We've met over those four years with every single board member, not every single board member, every single board that has been seated. They seat a new board just about every year, so we meet with the new board every year and we continue to work with them. And the current board that's in place today, we've met with them and we have full unanimous support of that board of this project. You might hear that there's some issues about the 300-foot versus 1,000-foot. As a developer, we're required to notice 300 feet. But because of the configuration of the villages, we didn't want anybody who lived outside of 300 feet to think that we were trying to slip something by them without them being notified because it's their community. So we noticed the entire community through the board, so that everybody in the current village project would know what we're trying to do and we could get comments from the entire community. That's really what brought the board into it. And the board owns all the common property as you approach our project. So the, the community does have property within our 300 feet, so we believe they have a voice. And we worked with them and they represented the members of their association. After the P&amp;Z meeting, where we had unanimous support to move forward, one of the members on Pepper Tree, which is the adjacent street to our project, met with me outside and they requested a meeting to work with them on maybe some different resolutions. Right now, the buffer between our project or the proposed project and Pepper Tree is 10 feet of open space. And then the other units will back up. And we tried to coordinate a meeting with those folks. The, the lady who gave us her name and number was on vacation, so we were not able to coordinate a meeting with her and the buyer, and the buyer was willing to meet. And we did receive a letter yesterday from the members of Pepper Tree, but it was just far too close to tonight's meeting to be able to engage that letter. Some of the issues that they brought up were issues that we've addressed in the past, either through our company or through the team that is working with us. And so we've addressed a lot of those issues, but we didn't have time to reengage that letter this close to the council meeting. So we're really proud of the project. It was always intended to continue to develop. We think it's a great use to have next to that and it will kind of clean up that whole corner of Highway 69 and Fane Road with a use that looks very similar to what's there now. And we think the two communities will get along well. And the current developer has proposed a nice amenity package to make it a standalone community, so they will have their own amenities and be able to live harmoniously next to their neighbors. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak now that it's a public meeting?
Mr. Mayor, let me just indicate that I'm told by the community development folks that the public hearing was noticed as required by law. The only thing that we neglected to do was to show on our agenda that the public hearing would be held. So as long as we hold the public hearing, I feel we'll be in good shape.
Great. So we're not doing a first reading tonight then?
Well, we will do the, we will, we will do a first reading tonight as well.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page. With that being said, and no other comments from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Now we'll entertain a motion for a first reading.
I'll make a motion to do a first reading on the zoning map change for ZMC 19-007 Creekside Village Villas.
I'll make a second.
Clerk, please read, or please call the vote.
May I pass this unanimously, Mayor?
Thanks, ma'am. Will you go ahead and read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 881. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley. A municipal corporation of Arizona amending the town zoning map, ZMC 19-007, by changing the zoning classification of parcels from R1L-70 Residential Single Family Limited zoning to C2PAD Commercial General Sales and, General Sales and Services Planned Area Development zoning. And providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, item 10C, Final Development Plan, FDP 20-016 Jasper Phase 2 Multifamily. Mr. Fitz, sir, I believe you're up. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. As you read, this is the Jasper Phase 2 Multifamily Development that's up for Final Development Plan approval. A little background on the site. The site's located within the Jasper Planned Area Development. Here's kind of a vicinity map looking out. A closer vicinity map. It's located along Jasper Parkway, adjacent to Jasper Drive and within the Jasper Planned Area Development. The site is zoned R2PAD. The original zoning of the site was 1R, 1M PAD. It was rezoned by the town council in February of 2020. This is the overall site plan of the Jasper Multifamily Development. It is a two-phase project with about 240 units, one and two bedroom units, four different floor plans. If you look at the way it's configured, there's access onto Jasper Parkway as well as a secondary access that's located in Phase 2 of the Jasper Parkway, however, adjacent to, that goes to Jasper Parkway. However, the emergency access will be built as part of Phase 1 to meet fire department regulations. Here's a landscape plan. One of the items that I was gonna point out is the buffering with the adjacent property. There's a minimum 45-foot wide setback and some areas is much larger than that, 80, 90 to 100 feet. But where you look at the, the areas there, the closest parcel is about 45 feet and that's to the backyard. Each individual unit has its own backyard that's fully walled in. They range in size from about 350 to square feet to about 450 square feet in size. Here's some of the elevations. These are the one and two bedrooms. That said, if you have any comments or questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Fitz, or Councilwoman?
When you said 450 feet, were you saying that for the backyard?
Mayor, councilmember? Yes. The backyards range in size from approximately 360 square feet to 450 square feet.
Do you know the square footage per unit?
The unit square footage is... The unit square footage is, range in size, I think it's eleven-hundred square feet to eight-seventy-six, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric, can you go, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Eric, can you go back to the site plan, please? So talk to me a little bit about the amenities.
So there's a central amenity. The central amenity will include leasing facilities, mail center, pool, spa, and event lawns. There's also courtyards that some of the units are, that all the units are built around that they'll have access to as well.
So the areas in between are like the, are green areas between the units, it looks like?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, correct. There are green areas, there are seating areas, there's hardscape amenities. That would be.
Awesome. And then the other thing I wanted to thank the developer in the southeast corner, I remember when we first went through this, there was residents adjacent to it that had concerns about drainage, and it looked like, it looks like he's handled it very well there.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, they're going through drainage rating and drainage plans, and they've.
It looks great.
I'd just like to just have a comment. I think it's important for every community to have a diverse level of housing, whether it's apartment, standalone homes, multifamily like this, and this meets the needs of Jasper, and I think it's appropriate. With that being said, anything else? Or Mr. Fitzher? Not a welcome motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution Number twenty-one-seventy-one, approving and adopting FDP twenty dash zero-one-six by electronic vote.
I stink in it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The President's seen Adam Slay, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on to item ten-D, Annexation, Starlight Drive. This is a public hearing. We'll open it up at this point. Mr. Parker?
Just real quick, we filed the requisite petitions with the county recorder, having first received comment or request from property owners in the area to seek the use of the sanitary sewer in Starlight. As you know, there's been a longstanding policy that you don't get access to town public facilities unless you're part of the town. So with that, people brought forward requests, and looking at them initially, it shows that better than sixty-five percent of the property owners along here have expressed desire to be part of the town of Prescott Valley. It is a permissive, but it is not an obligation process. That is to say, even if petitions come forward representing fifty-plus-one percent of the property owners, you're not obligated to grant them annexation. The concept here would be having them undertake construction improvements to make access to the sewer and then pay all associated fees to do so. Also, because of the distance to the sewer being less than three-hundred feet, should they elect not to hook to the sewer within three years, then we would have to pursue them in order to do so through our regulatory structure. This is an opportunity to hear from the public, and then after which, you will direct whether or not you want to consider annexing this property, and we will proceed forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd welcome anyone that wishes to come on down and speak a little bit more in reference to this topic. Sir, if you would just state your name once you get up there.
My name is Dave Graves, and I am one of the property owners that you're talking about the area. Just curious, obviously, coming tonight, as we purchased property that was septic and not part of it, and I know that getting tied into it does have some benefit as far as recharge water and going back into the aquifer, and it's good for the community as far as the growth that we have, but we need that. Just curious if there's any assistance from the town in that to us, if that is completely on us to do that, if this gets passed, or will there be some compensation or loans or anything?
From a financial point of view, is what you're asking. Staff, can you help him out with that?
Yeah, if I could. The property owners approached the town on this given annexation.
Some of the property owners.
That is correct. And we made it abundantly clear to the property owner that initiated this effort that this was certainly a process that mayor and council will consider, although they certainly don't have to. The concept behind it was to assist everybody along Starlight that was within these boundaries because there was a high failure rate with septic systems. And the cost to go ahead and replace the septic systems would outstrip any cost associated with hooking up to the Prescott Valley wastewater system. Having said that, the individuals along that route are avoiding the very substantial costs that were borne by Prescott Valley citizens when there was a design for that sewer line and manholes that go down through that way. And also, you're getting the benefit of having a road that is paved with service lines underneath the road that will help service. So in other words, the benefits that are accrued to anybody along Starlight that chooses to move forward with this project, you're getting more benefit than if you had initially been there back in nineteen ninety-two.
Okay. Gives me an idea what to expect with it, at least. That's what I wanted to find out. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Poofie Nellner, I'm also a resident on Starlight, and I guess my main concern was the time period that we would be looking at. Obviously, I wasn't sure. I agree with my neighbor in regards to was there going to be any assistance in, because I sit on a pie-type of property, there's constantly water lines broken up Starlight, so I'm just concerned that for myself, that this cost me incur more than just removing the septic tank and going into that. Usually, I just have to pump once a year, and that's it. I've been in the home now for thirty years, never had an issue. So that would be my concern in being annexed in.
You would end up having, by agreement, three years to hook up to the sewer line. After that point, you're going to be assessed a fee, and we're going to end up getting very serious about having you hook up to that sewer system. Why is that? Number one, the general health of the population in your area because of failed septic tanks needs to be addressed. And so we are working with the individuals on Starlight to help with that problem.
So for future, we'll hear more from you than in regards to?
There's a process going forward. You will end up being approached and communicated with if council elects to move forward with this annexation. And we will fully lay out the process to hook up to the system. We will make recommendations on contractors that would be available to do that type of thing, but you will end up contracting with them to actually do the hookup. I can assure you that there are many people in the area to the west of you that would love to have the option that you have sitting in front of you. Additionally, there's another part of town that we serve water to that would dearly love to have the opportunity to hook up to the Prescott Valley wastewater system, but that's not an option for them unless they spend a lot of money to put in main lines and everything else. You're getting a heck of a deal.
Yes. Okay, great. Yeah, we put in gas, and I think this is our final, so I am looking forward to it. Appreciate your time.
Welcome to town if council chooses to go forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming out. Come on down. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Robin Getz, and I'm an owner with my husband on Starlight. We just put in a brand-new duplex with a brand-new septic system, and it's a rental. So my concern is, if you're going to do this work, how long is our property going to be unavailable for our tenants? Because, you know, we have a responsibility to them. That means we have to house them somewhere because we're under a contract with them renting. And also, how much is it going to cost us to agree to this?
You're going to have to talk to a contractor, find out what they're going to charge to run a service line from the mainline sewer to a connection point, which is typically very close to or adjacent to the septic tank. In terms of having your tenants be put in a position where they would have to vacate while this work is going on, I can assure you, we put in over eight thousand hookups in the town of Prescott Valley when we did our wastewater system in nineteen ninety-one through ninety-five, and not one home had a disruption in their wastewater system. Not one.
So they could still stay there in the rental?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's what I was concerned.
If your contractor would tell you something different than that, go find a different contractor.
So you guys are going to give us the name of these contractors, or is it our responsibility?
There will be significant communication going forward, but we're waiting for council to elect to either make the annexation or not. Once that's put in place, then the conversations about contractors, the process, and everything else will happen.
I just have one more question. Are you doing the sewer connection through the back of, there's like an easement that runs between the properties?
Correct.
Are you running it through the back? Because I can't see you guys doing it through the front.
Richard would go ahead and share with us what he would like to do, is put it overhead in a clear plastic line, but that's probably not appropriate. It will go downhill. I can assure you that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to have any comments?
Am I allowed to ask a question?
You can absolutely ask a question.
Okay, and Larry, if you could maybe explain the abandonment of a current septic that's probably done at the time when they hooked up the new line, and the same contractor can also probably do that as well, correct?
Per state law, when you take a septic tank offline, you have to quote-unquote abandon it or disable it. Now, I can share with you during Phase One Sewer, back a number of years ago, we did have some people that said that I just put in a septic tank and I still want to use it. And we scratched our heads and were wondering, what are we looking at? A wine cellar or what? And we made it abundantly clear that we needed to abandon septic tanks. How do you do that? The method of choice is to pump all the liquid out of the septic tank and then fill it with dirt. And we have probably eight or nine thousand of those in the town of Prescott Valley that were abandoned during Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase One-A sewer projects.
Mr. Parker?
Just as a reminder, we have, depending upon income, we have home grants that we administer here in the town. If you qualify, those funds can be made available to you if you stay in your place of residence for five or ten years, depending upon the amount of dollars that are invested in your property, they are forgiven. NACOG also has dollars that could be brought to bear for this opportunity. Last thing is, though we don't do it very often, sometimes we enter into agreements over time with property owners to be able to lessen the significance of that capital outlay by taking it over time, and aware of circumstances where we've done that.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Richard, can, for those of us that are new, can you explain to us the annexation process? So now, this is the first step. What happens?
This will be the first step, and the council would consider whether or not they would like to direct us to move forward. Based on the information we've received from the property owners, we have verified that better than sixty-five percent of the property owners along this roadway would like to annex into the town of Prescott Valley and utilize the sewer system. If fifty-plus-one percent, fifty-one percent of the property owners share petitions, and we verify those petitions, will come back to you, and you will be given an opportunity to either annex the property into the town of Prescott Valley or not. There are not additional public hearings necessary. This is the only one that you would be given an opportunity. Certainly, at the mayor's discretion, he could hear from comments if he chose to do so, but it's not a public forum. Simply, we've got the requisite petitions. Do you want to annex these properties, or do you not? I cannot think of any example of annexation that we've brought forward to the town council through this process where the town council has not gone ahead and annexed the property.
So after this meeting, then you'll send something to the owners?
Correct. They will receive at their mailing address, well, actually, where they get their tax assessment, they'll get petitions, and people can hand-carry them if they want to, but once we get the requisite fifty-plus-one percent, then we'll be back to you to talk to you. After filing the petitions in the county recorder's office and after this meeting, they can only be valid for one year. After a year, the whole process stops and would have to be started over should we elect to do it again.
And then can, you're going to have an open meeting for them to answer all these questions of an estimate how much we think our cost will be and?
We're trying to make it as abundantly clear as we can, and that is, this is an opportunity for you to decide what you want to do, and if you decide that you want to hook to the municipal sewer, we're not doing the work. You're doing that on your own, but then you're paying our fees necessary for the services that we provide. And the latter, we can probably work with people on. The former is purely up to them. With a housing grant, we advertise the property owner actually enters into the agreement with the contractor. We just provide the funding. We don't, well, actually, we interact a lot, but the contract is between the two parties and it's not entered into by the town.
But you will sit with them and tell them how much our fee is and all that gets done?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Richard, I'd just like to see if we could extend the offer all the way up to Starlight and just see if you're going to bring in those residents as well. I mean, if we're going to do, it looks like twenty parcels, just see what their appetite is for doing this. If we're going to do it, I just don't want the people on the north end of Starlight to go, wait a minute, we missed out on that. Let's try to see what we can do, and then we're back here.
Well, we can, I would recommend that we pursue this one because we've already filed it. But it's your direction, Mayor, I will. I'll send out notices to the people in the county. You may not remember, but we undertook this a long time ago, actually, the year I started here, and there was a lot of banging of heads, and it was tough. I would like to see all of Castle Canyon Mesa come in, and we have a really good relationship with our county supervisor, and who knows, maybe they'll throw some money at it.
Sure. I think that's definitely something we might as well open it up. Council, Vice Mayor?
And just for the council's information, I did talk to Supervisor Mallory, and she supports us a hundred percent.
All right. With that being said, public hearing closed. Move on to item ten-E, Sail Town Right Away, Baja Circle. At this point, Vice Mayor will be taken over. I'll be recusing myself from a vote due to personal relationship with one of the developers and a business relationship with them.
And I will also be recusing myself with, due to the same reason, personal relationship with one of the developers.
Staff, may we have a staff report, please?
Okay. The mayor and Vice Mayor and council, we were approached about a year ago to see if there was any interest in abandoning a portion of Baja Circle, and we, the Public Works Department, went out, did an assessment of their needs for transportation purposes, and then were able to determine that, yes, in fact, abandoning or selling a portion of Baja Circle was in the town's best interest. It reduces our maintenance liability and a very little-used, that's putting it mildly, piece of ground. And so with that in mind, we followed the Arizona State Land Department approach to dispensing with property to go ahead and sell property, and that was to conduct an auction. The auction was- The auction was advertised, and we held the auction. I was the auctioneer. We had one party show up that was interested in bidding on the property, and it was for the assessed value plus a dollar. And the auction was concluded, and we come forward to you this evening for the approval of the sale of that property.
And it's important for us to sell this or abandon it or what have you because we've approved a project on top of it, and we don't let developers build on top of roads.
That is correct.
So any questions from council? So I will entertain a motion.
I motion to authorize the mayor to sign a quitclaim deed for sale to 6301 North Baja Circle LLC, apparent high bidder of described town right-of-way known as Baja Circle for the bid amount of $10,001.
Mr. Vice Mayor, could I ask that we go ahead and redo that motion and make sure that we authorize the Vice Mayor to sign it in the absence of the mayor? Since the mayor won't be signing this one.
Okay. I motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign a quitclaim deed for sale to 6301 North Baja Circle LLC, apparent high bidder of described town right-of-way known as Baja Circle for the bid amount of $10,001.
I'll second.
Thank you, Don. Don?
Councilmember Dickinson? Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item 10F, professional service agreement, architectural design, Boys and Girls Club remodel project. Sir, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor. Council. This is for professional services. It is for the Boys and Girls Club that's located at Luce and Roberts. And that building was built in 1968, so it's been around a little while. I know in 2017, we were able to put a gymnasium up there with the, a little help from the Boys and Girls Club and the Fane family and the Phoenix Suns that also helped out with that. Right now, what we're looking at with that, with that being a Boys and Girls Club, we've got a lot of kids running around in there. And we can look at that and think that maybe we should bring it up to current code, make sure that it's a good, safe place to be, update our fire suppression system, that type of thing with it. So we have put that out for a RFQ, and we got SOQ, Statements of Qualification, from three architects. We interviewed two, and at the end, we came up with Michael Taylor Architects. And we negotiated with him, and we come up with a cost of $53,000 that we'd like to get approved that will take us from programming through construction. So this is Michael Taylor, and he wanted to show up tonight, just be a part of it and represent, and give him a second to have something to say.
Welcome, sir.
Yes. Actually, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. It's really a pleasure to be considered for this project. You actually said 1968. The building was actually built in 1986 because I was on the original design team that worked on that building.
You're dating yourself.
I know. I'm older than, I, look. Anyway, I would welcome any questions that you might have for me, but really appreciate you considering my firm for this project.
Great. I welcome you, sir. And the Boys and Girls Club, I've said it before, I think is a huge integral part of our community. So whatever we can do as a town to help make it better and with your assistance is more than welcome, on my behalf at least. So, council, anything else for, yes, Vice Mayor?
So Larry, it says that we're not going to exceed $763,279, but yet it shows a million dollars. So the Boys and Girls Club are going to come up the rest of it for construction? Or how's that going to work?
Go ahead.
No. When the budget was created, the million dollars was basically a place card, a placeholder, because we did not know what the amount of the grant would be.
Okay, got it.
So the amount of the grant is the 760.
Counsel? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. A motion to approve the agreement with Michael Taylor Architects Incorporated in the amount of $53,000 for design and construction phase services for the Boys and Girls Club remodel project, CIP number P481 through CDBG number 103-21 by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
I don't know why it's not showing up.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Taylor, you have a lot of pressure on your shoulders with a bunch of children that'll be critiquing your work, so I have confidence in you. Moving on, item 10G, microtransit service, Prescott Valley Federal Cares Act funding application submitted by Mr. Norm Davis. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The item I have before you tonight is microtransit service upstart here in Prescott Valley. What's unique about this particular item is the Federal Cares Act. There was transit money appropriated by the federal government back when, they were appropriating money back when this COVID hit, back in March of 2020. So if I could, Mayor, just talk about some of the timeline. Transit advocates here in the CYMPO region, Central Yavapai region, there's always been transit advocates wanting to have better transit service with federal dollars that come this way. So back in February 2020, the CYMPO did approve a transit implementation plan. Like always, when we start our service, we like to have a professional transit firm actually give you the details of what not only the need is, but what service can be provided and what the cost can be. So coincidentally, in February 2020, a 10-year-old study for regional transit upstart in the region was refreshed. Well, and then a month later, COVID hits us. And then we found out back in March of 2020 that there was this federal cares act money specifically given for transit. Councilmember, recall, the town did receive cares act money that was put in our general fund for law enforcement. Well, this is a different funding. It is specifically for transit. It can only be used for transit. So rolling back, so we did with the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planaries Executive Board, directed us to say, hey, can we go capture this particular funding? So that was back in March. In June, the administrator for CYMPO came and made a presentation in June to say this money is available, and we talked to council about that. So regionally, there was an effort to say, well, let's talk about how can we utilize this funding? So the decision was made that, once again, engage a professional transit consultant to say, what could we do with this 3.6 million of federal cares act money? So the consultant did a study to say, how could we implement it? A four-year upstart transit plan was studied and commented by technical staff to say this money could be captured. That particular study was completed in October 20, so if we move forward as a region, then we could capture this funding. What did happen from there, Mayor, was the, and council, the consultant was asked again to make a presentation. And at the November council work study, there, some council members here may be called that particular presentation. There are three new sitting council members. I'd be happy to go through the presentation that was given, that the professional consultant developed for your background tonight, or we could skip that, but it was included with your particular packets. But I do want to point out, I do have the presentation available tonight. In addition, that the consultant prepared a, I get a quick brief, that is, they call it a one-pager, but it would talk about implementation of the 3.6 million of federal cares acts transit money, how it could be implemented. And the consultant was directed that year one, there would be just basic microtransit service, basically the demand response vehicle would be implemented in year one. And then if council so desired, or City of Prescott so desired, year two and three, money could be, or the program expanded to where the available money could be used for not only service to Prescott. We would be proposing this year one plan is for service in Prescott Valley to upstart and then move more regionally and utilize the funding. It's important to note, this funding is limited for the 3.6 million. Most important thing is, it does not have a match. Typical federal transit funding has an operational match of 50%. And you need to match that whatever entity engages that particular funding. So there is a quick brief that was in your council packets to talk about how this would be phased in of a four-year program. As I mentioned before, year one would be Prescott Valley service only, a microtransit demand response van. And then there was, in your council packet also, a particular, the study was included, which is about 25 pages, of the consultant that looked at this federal cares act we have available for three years. So that's available to give you the details that's to implement the program. So once again, no-match funding and upstart microtransit service here in Prescott Valley. The term microtransit, if you're not familiar, it's actually a newer term to me. I've been engaged with some of the studies over the last 15, 20 years. But a new study that, microtransit means that we are able to utilize our smartphones to utilize technology to schedule a particular demand response vehicle to come. Typically, that would be the day in advance, but we take advantage of the technology in order to do that. So that's the newer term, but it is. It's still a vehicle that would come to the destination that you would say, when you need your ride, whether or not they can provide it, and there would be a copay in accordingly. So be happy to give the same presentation that Chris Bridges gave, the CYMPO administrator, for some background.
We can hold off on that for a minute, and we can just entertain council, and we can maybe circle back if we need to.
Okay.
I just think this is an opportunity to use a grant that is, like you said, non-matched with any funds from us to explore a microtransit opportunity, which is basically in uncharted waters. It's not been done around here ever. And it gives us an opportunity to set the pace as a town of Prescott Valley. And this isn't a political thing in no means. This is providing service to citizens who would normally maybe try to utilize a voucher system that we are already supporting. It's interesting that I literally had a phone call, it was about three weeks ago, from a woman who lives in the apartments just to the north of us, in the assisted living. And she utilizes the vouchers. And she's been unsuccessful the last few attempts because they've just been so popular. And in a post-COVID environment, it's not, it's not the transit system that we expect to see with buses cruising around. This is like a direct-to-your-door type of service. And although they may not have a smartphone, they can still be utilizing this system through a telephone. So that's something that's interesting. And again, in the event that this fails in four years, we're out nothing but time. We've utilized money that was provided to us. And I like to be positive. I'm kind of a glass-half-full type of guy, so I like to think that it's going to be successful. But, you know, even Babe Ruth struck out a few times, and that's okay. At least we're trying, and at least we're providing a service and an attempt to our citizens who not necessarily have a vehicle, or they ran into some problems with the law where their license was taken away. Current system doesn't provide that. The voucher system doesn't allow for a 20-year-old who has a suspended license to get a voucher. This is something that someone can pick up the phone and utilize for all of our citizens to get to work, go see family, do shopping, essential things that we normally wouldn't have. And for the most part, I say it over, I said it on Friday during the budget retreat, we have to take care of our core of our community. And this is part of taking care of the core of the community, in my opinion. Vice Mayor?
I agree with what you said, Mayor. Norm, thank you for your presentation. Looks like you're going to be hopefully getting another staff member to help you out with this. I think this is important. I personally don't like leaving free money on the table, especially from the federal government. And I want to echo what the mayor said loud and clear, that if this doesn't work in four to five years or however long, and it starts being a drain on the community, and we don't have the funds to fund it at that time, that we will disband the service. And I'll call him, my friend here, Tom Steele, wrote to us today, and he and I have disagreed on at least one other thing. So we're going to disagree on this, Tom, if you're listening. I know you probably are. But in your last line, you said a PV project would require a voter-approved increase in sales tax or new property tax. And that is not necessarily correct. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what our, what our revenues are going to be in three to five years. It may be that we have a great big box commercial user that comes on boards and generates a bunch of sales tax, and we're able to pay for this out of our general fund. So I don't want to jump to the conclusion that Tom did. There was a survey done that said we'd have to raise property taxes. Again, that isn't necessarily the case either. So I want everyone to know that. And in our packet, it does say that transit increases disposable income, transit suggests, supports economic development, so will create some jobs. And also, transit contributes to improve air quality. So I think it's very important. I know several people here, when I was on the campaign trail, that don't have cars. And this is very important. If they pay $2 to get somewhere, to get to Walmart, what did you say that woman told you she paid to go to Walmart, round trip?
Oh, with utilizing an Uber, she was, she was now forced to charge, be charged $12.
Yeah. So I think it's a great idea.
Counsel? Counselwoman?
I did have a quick question, Norm. So they were starting, when they gave the presentation, they were talking about one van to start. Is there an opportunity to get more vans should we need them with the same money?
Sure. As we worked through the process, you know, that is the available money. Now, they did want to stretch it out to provide the opportunity that we needed to, you know, start a pilot program and get it started with Prescott Valley. But yes, you could add more vans if the other stakeholders choose not to participate with, you know, the next step, which would be a joint powers agreement because obviously we'd need to involve the City of Prescott in year two. That's to be worked out.
It's all on us.
To answer your question, right now, they're looking at the one, the demand response van, but as you saw too, there's also the ability to utilize existing cab service for ride hailing. So yes, could be more. The money's there. And I guess that's as we move forward and we make decisions. Could it be more vehicles to provide more service if it's a demand there?
That gives us the flexibility as Prescott Valley, it moves on a sliding scale, basically. And because we are going to be at the forefront of this, this helps us lead the way.
I would just hate to see it fail because it wasn't sufficient, is what my big concern is. I don't want to see it not work. So my other thought is too, we do still have the quit case clause, or I'm trying, I'm trying to think of what it was actually called, that would be wording in there to say that at any time, we can dissolve this contract, correct?
Mayor, I want to interject. I know you're taking journal comments, but what I wanted to finish with. And so what's in front of you tonight with the background that you do, materials you do have, is that first, two decisions would be, we'd have to become a designated recipient for the federal cares act money. There's a process there through the federal government and their particular representatives. So that's the one thing we need to do, is become a direct recipient so we can do that process. And equally, there would be a transit administrator that would have to manage the funding and the service delivery, and that would become a town employee at the town cost. So there is a cost to put this particular, it's in your packet, what we think a transit administrator job description would be. So if you'd move forward tonight to say, yeah, go capture the funding, get it started, we would have to hire an administrator. And actually, an important point too, this administrator would manage the grant funding, the federal grant funding that's got its own rules to capture funding back, and also the service delivery. But equally, we're looking, if you look at the background materials, we would actually look for a request for proposals to get a professional transit provider that does this, that is good at it, tried, true, and tested, what works, what doesn't. So what's important to note is, the burden, so to speak, on the town would be the transit administrator out of current town funds. But we would hire experienced transit administrators through the professional services contract that we put out to say, you have to meet a certain experience level and what your performance has been in order to be considered for the contract. So we would have people that know what to do. As always, I know what I've read in these studies, but once again, you need to have someone that's walked the walk, and that's what we would do. There's lots of companies out there that suggest. And actually with, it's been interesting, I've been getting some emails that I'd like to respond once we take action tonight because they've seen it, and they said, hey, our company does this. Call me back. So.
Interesting.
Good people out there. So yes, the information highway out there, there's people that said, yeah, if you've got money and want to capture it, we've got qualified people that could help you with that process and tell you, make sure that if you set it upright and, you know, obviously make the expenditures you need to, we'll make sure your system is successful with the reporting. the expenditures you need to, we'll make sure your system is successful with the reporting and whatever line you draw of, you know, the service level recommendations that you make for the service level expectations.
Absolutely. Councilwoman, it looked like you had something?
Yes, I had a disabled veteran approach me as well with reference to public transportation that might, we might be having at some point in the future while I was campaigning. And he said that the VA does not necessarily provide transportation for them, and he was really at loss in a number of situations that he had as far as getting transportation, getting vouchers for whatever was available in town. And the other comment I have is, the first year, it says the system is expected to provide nearly 9,000 rides. And then from that point, the second year, it says that it will go up to around 28,000, I believe, and then 42,000 the third year. Do we anticipate, or can we project that? I know that's part of this brochure that they, they have given to us, but is that something that we could easily see or foresee?
Yes, Councilwoman Dixon, I'd answer that question, yes. By hiring these professional transit consultants, they've, obviously have experience. So when they study a community, they look at trips generated, need, demographics, jobs, the physical, the geographics of an area. They're going to tell you, yes, this is what you can deliver for the, for the money, and this is what you expect for demand. But it's, but it's important to note too, that this particular service they provide will have its criteria, that it's not a premium service that is your personal butler, so to speak, to come pick you up. With that criteria, that's what they can tell you. If you have an expenditure, they know what the need is, and they're, obviously by having a professional transit consultant, they're pretty close to what they anticipate. So there'll be a service model of what they can deliver for, you know, service expectations. And that's what we want to communicate to council. There will be people that would call you and say, hey, I called 10 minutes ago, I was late for work because my car broke down, they couldn't come get me. Well, keep in mind, the criteria that's listed here is, needs to be scheduled ahead in advance, and you have, you know, typically a 20-minute lead time, and you may have to walk a little bit from what they tell you. So it's, you know, a service with its particular service expectations or requirements on what they, what you can expect.
Anything else, counsel?
Okay.
Councilman?
Norm, if I remember right, when we went through this information, employers can also give contributions into this fund, am I correct? And by doing so, that would extend the money. Am I right on that?
Absolutely. Anytime you provide a service, there's procedures, I'm sure, we need to make sure we accept it correctly, but yes, that's always part of any particular system here is, you know, if they have a particular need, there are requirements that, criteria to accept that money. And I'm aware too, that depending on the particular company, there is other incentives given to companies through government programs to reduce pollution, you know, big trip generators that, you know, big corporations. So yes, all kinds of models out there, depending on the size of your community, what your community demands, but absolutely, there is opportunities of, to accept funding to help this system. Likewise, each particular, you know, it's called a human service provider that gets funding, they can divert some of their funds if they so desire, if they feel like it's meeting their own individual needs. There's, you know, there's lots of existing service providers out there in any type that provide service. You know, the VA, I think, does have a certain amount of rides, it's limited, but everyone provides it out there. The Red Cross has money, you know, you get neighbor to neighbor. All these particular agencies are able to capture not only money for vans, but, you know, also operation of the system. So this could help augment the existing service we have, in addition to the NACOG vouchers that we fund currently. So once again, we're addressing more of that unmet need by having a funding source currently to provide rides to that transit-dependent community out there.
Just, and just as a thought, if we did not spend the 3.6 million in three years, but we're using, we're progressing towards it, will that money extend into the fourth year, or do we have to spend it in that three years?
I understand it's available for four years, that's what the federal bill was.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, a cap of 3.6 million, that's a particular formula they set if, you know, keep in mind, it's not Prescott Valley as much, it was given to the central Yavapai region, of which we're going to capture the first year per this plan, which was worked through with staff and then some of the electeds making comment to help shape what we're going to start with, and shape this one pager of what our four-year program through the consultant is particularly scoped as.
Thank you. Yes. Councilwoman?
One more odd question for you, Norm, thank for your patience. Is this a standalone company that we then work alongside, and then they'll be providing the, let's say, liability auto and workers' comp policies? Or is this going to be something that is ours, that we will also be providing the auto insurance and policies against?
I think I'd answer that with confidence, yes. By hiring the experienced transit professional to provide the service, yes, they provide all that, the vehicles, the insurance, and they say, here's a package. And obviously, when you have an RFP, you'll say, well, this company, you know, will work through the specifications, say, this is a service we desire, the insurance requirements, so that, yes, vehicles are insured, no extra burden. They will say, and anticipate lots of response, that this particular provider will do it for this, and whether or not anyone's cheaper, we would anticipate, there's providers out there that do this in existing areas. I'm sure they're businessmen, they're looking to expand their business model, and they would provide it all.
I didn't want to be a naysayer, but I want to make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is, yes, thank you.
Good question, Councilwoman.
I have a couple of questions. Is time of the essence with reference to taking advantage of this CARES package?
Yes, the money is there, of course, that's a federal bill, I understand, that says, yes, you got to take advantage of it within this time limit of four years. So yes, time is of the essence to say, yes, it was appropriated in March, you know, we're sitting here, you know, 10 months later to say, are we going to go try to capture this money? We need to go get the transit administrator on board in order to, you know, identify and go help capture the money, work with the, the local CYMP organization to say, we need to capture this money and help that way. So the administrator will be in, in charge of this, but yes, if it's a go, we would want to get this transit administrator on board to do the paperwork, so to speak, and go capture us to get us approved as a designated recipient, in addition to start the RFP process to go look for someone that can provide the service.
So if we don't do it now, we'll lose out?
Absolutely.
Probably can't say for sure, but there's, it's never been, it's been known to offer something, and then over time, when someone doesn't utilize it, take it away. We just don't want to give them that opportunity.
And that's, you know, what was shaped was, to the mayor's point, we started with year one in Prescott Valley. So we're going to take the lead, so to speak, in the region with our experience in being the largest community in the region, to say, yeah, we've got, you know, some of the muster and wherewithal to go pursue this and deliver the best program we can with the funding. And as we say, turn over a few stones and see what works. Mayor, you commented earlier, we'll see how, how good we do, and we'll do a lot of good, and provide a lot of rides to the transit dependent community. And there'll be challenges along the way, some unmet need, there's always a need out there. We're meeting a current need right now with the transit-dependent community, but as you know, it's not enough where you draw the bar. This will certainly help.
Councilwoman, you have another question?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have just one other question. In phase one, basically, just with the first year, it would just encompass Prescott Valley, so this would not include Yavapai College students, meaning that that college is in Prescott, so they could not utilize this.
This also can be, this is not set in stone, this map that they provided us, that's something that you need to understand as well. And from what I understand, being on SIMPO, it is going to be basically bringing in other groups and organizations. I know that Rodney Jenkins from Yavapai College is extremely supportive of this program, and would like to see somehow Yavapai College work into it as well, so.
You know, and I use that term, you know, through the studies, you know, you have that, that transit-dependent community out there. So there's four basic demographics, so students are one of them, you know, some of the disabled, and then some that the economically challenged have that. And, you know, a big part of the community too is just the senior community out there, you're not physically able to drive anymore, and so they're dependent upon transit. So those are the demographics that you need to address. So not always economic, it's just physical, you know, not only a physical disability, just due to age can be.
Correct.
You can't drive anymore, can't see well enough to drive.
Councilwoman, anything else? Councilwoman Neppely?
So time is of the essence for us to apply, possibly. Is, is the federal government going to feel the same way? If, once we make the application, you know, townspeople hear, oh, awesome, this is going to be great for getting, you know, helping me get to work, I'm going to keep an eye out for that, and then six months go by. So what is the, and what's the timeline once we make the application?
Getting federally designated has its timeline. I can assure you, as staff, with, we put a transit administrator on board, we will pursue that vigorously. But to say, yes, it's a two-week process, I'd be full heartedly to tell you that. So federal money is difficult to capture, we know that. But it is a funding source, and it's $3.5 million. So you don't know until you get started. So yes, we'll find out more about the timelines. If other communities have chosen since the money became available in March to capture it, we'll do that outreach to say, hey, is there a similar community in the nation, not just Arizona-wide, that captured this funding? What did you do? How long did it take you in your state? So my understanding is, you do go through the governor's office to get this federal designation, so there are steps. So, you know, we're still in business as governments, so we'll pursue it vigorously, as I say, and deliver it as quick as we can, and continue to knock on doors when you don't get the response. Our Public Works Department has been known to do that. We'll call you again and put the foot in the door. So can answer your question with confidence, except we will pursue it, and no firm timeline, but it'll be as quick as we can, continue to push it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Norm. If there's nothing else?
So along the lines of what the mayor said with the college, I think YRMC is also interested because they're trying to get doctors and specialists back and forth. So, you know, like he said, the map could change. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to authorize submittals for Prescott Valley to acquire designated recipient status for Federal Cares Act funding for microtransit service, and authorize staff to hire a transit administrator to manage any Prescott Valley microtransit service program so funded by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember, they can still?
Yes.
The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, we'll get started.
Moving on, item 10H, new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Danny B.'s Fish Shack. Public hearing, we'll open it up.
Just have a couple of comments on this. This item and the next agenda item are both related. This is a petition for, a recommendation for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Danny B.'s Fish Shack. The applicant could not be here present, but I shared a letter with you that she wrote. She just wanted to say she's very happy to be part of the business community, and that everyone has made her feel very welcomed. Her business is taking over the location where Gabby's Kitchen used to be on Spouse Drive, and our office did not receive any pro or con statements for the liquor license.
All right. Leave any other comments on the liquor license? Anyone in the public would like to comment on Danny B.'s liquor license? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Move to 10I, new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Danny B.'s Fish Shack approval. With no comments or questions, we can just take a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval of a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Danny B.'s Fish Shack by Kimberly Stam Agent by electronic vote.
I second.
All right. Clerk, call the vote.
Councilmember, they can still didn't come up.
Yes.
The passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on, item 11, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the COVID, to the council as a whole, and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask that the town manager to review the matter, or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Folks, at this time, it's your opportunity, sir, welcome. Actually, oh, hang on, front row first. Come on up, sir. You guys will be next.
No, I hate wording this thing, but I came to talk to you tonight about it.
State your name, please, sir.
My name is Richard Slaton. I've lived here since 2007, and I'm an instructor over at the college, and I was an evaluator for the Superior Court system for that. Mayor knows who I am, and he's been very patient with me the last couple of months. You all received a letter at the beginning of December that was signed by the top-tier professionals for the Yavapai County Board of Health. It implored you to increase your mitigation actions on COVID. Now, this doesn't protect me, wearing this protects other people from me if I've got it and I'm asymptomatic. Now, where the mayor's power rests in this is he has the ability to say yea or nay to a mandate. And I know that he's talked with Yavapai County Health Services Director, and he's had some other input, but the decision that he came to is that he's not going to mandate wearing of a mask. That's where he and I differ greatly. Sedona did that, they mandated a mask, and you may know about that. They mandated wearing a mask back in July. Right now, their case count is at 600. Right now, the case count here in Prescott Valley is 30, excuse me, my mouth is dry, is 3,300. That deals largely from this little $2 item. Now, I know that there's some here that think that this is an invasion of their rights, that nobody's going to tell them what they're going to do about it. I had the opportunity to arrive early, and I observed Mr. Tarkowski. Congratulations on your retirement. I didn't see him with the mask, and I saw him talking with other individuals. But if we can do this, we can make a difference. But the problem is, medical, medical expert advice is not what the decision is based upon. I know that because if it was, everybody would see these in the stores. I've provided the mayor with several proposals on how to accomplish this, with a mandate and without a mandate. I've been met by silence. I asked for a meeting with all of you. And you, Mr. Town Attorney, one of the concerns that I had for the city, for the town that I put in my last email to the mayor, was that soon somebody's going to figure out they can sue the town for negligence, and they can say that they were harmed because they were emotionally suffering. And if the town doesn't do all it can...
Mr. Slaton, I appreciate, I appreciate your time, sir, thank you for coming out, thank you for your patience for waiting till the end.
And I thank you for your patience with me, sir.
Yes.
And all of you. Good night.
I believe we have someone else who would like to come up and speak. And again, I would like to thank you for your patience, it's been a long evening.
Hi, my name is Teresa Baumann Allen, I moved here two years ago, and I love this town. I just became aware today of the funds, the CARES Act funds being slated for transportation, which is great. I had a question about it, and I didn't know when to raise my hand, but, so if the funds are slated for transportation only, and we get buses, what do those buses look like? Are they charter buses? Are they log buses? Is this, does anyone know? Have you seen them?
Sure, usually during, during this time, ma'am, it's usually just the comments, you get to speak to council. What I will do though is direct you to Mr. Davis, he'll be able to provide you some information and reference that.
Okay.
But I do assure you, it's not going to be like the buses you see down in Phoenix.
Okay.
They'll be more transit-like buses.
Another question I had was, after we purchase all of these things to start this, if it doesn't become successful, do we own all of the buses and everything that we bought?
And again, I'll, I'll let Mr. Davis clarify that, but we will not be purchasing any equipment.
If I could, it's very early in the process, and what would be ideal, and Mr. Davis did go ahead and allude to that, is contracting out for the services... go ahead and allude to that, is contracting out for the services. We would not own those, we would have a company provide the service, much the same as we provide water service, wastewater service, legal services, having an outside contractor do that. And so it remains to be seen, it's in the very early stages, but getting that man's phone number so he can keep you updated would be ideal.
And the cost of, to take a ride, and...
Absolutely, all that will be taken care of, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Is there anyone else I would like to speak? With that being said, move on to our last item. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Clerk, call the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everyone, for coming out.